When I went in, this is no data. It's an update while. Because when I go to websites, it say you need it.
And they should all be activated.
I did the update because hey, it's ready for the activation thing and it's a note of notification, verification, I mean.
All right, seven o'clock. We call the regular city council meeting to order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with reason and justice for all.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Hatterline? Schultz? Lavalley? Carncross?
Here.
Lancaster?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Luna? Or Mr. President?
All right, thank you. At this time, we open the floor to any person who wishes to speak to city council about any item that is not on the agenda. Does anyone wish to address city council? Seeing none, we will move right on to a plaque presentation to the planning zoning commission. The former chairperson of the planning zoning commission, and that's Commissioner Jim Carbonetti. Jim Carbonetti has been in service in this position for fifteen and a half years and has finally decided it's time to let someone else take the reins. So we thank you, Jim. Please, Administrator Leonie is going to make the presentation.
I actually started working with the city in nineteen sixty-five. I can tell you it was thirty-two hundred people at that time. A lot of changes since then.
Imagine so.
Good luck, Tim.
Thank you, Jim, for your service. We certainly appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to the agenda item number five, consent to agenda five A, which is regular city council meeting minutes, seeking approval. Seek a motion to approve as presented.
I'm making motion approve.
And motion by Perkins and second by Luna. Any comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you, clerk. There was nothing removed from the consent agenda, so we will move on to item seven, which is a community and economic development committee recommendation for redevelopment of the property located at four ninety-five Comanche Circle, seeking a motion to adopt the resolution to induce the redevelopment of property located at four ninety-five Comanche Circle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Carncross, second by Gorman. Any comments or questions here?
I do have one question. Isn't this in the opportunity zone?
It's in the TIF district, so yes, it would also be in an opportunity zone.
Go ahead.
But it is not in the enterprise zone.
Is not in the enterprise zone for the...
Because it's a TIF.
When's the industrial TIF one up then?
When, yeah, twenty-twenty-seven, I believe, yes.
Okay, so it means that it's not creating another TIF.
No, it would allow them to track their expenses in the current TIF that is there.
Okay, and then so once it's twenty-twenty-seven's up, it's the TIF part's up for that if we don't renew it.
That's up to the city council. The council could seek to renew the TIF at that time if they decide to do so.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna? All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you, clerk. I am number eight is payment of the bills, seeking a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of eight hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred three dollars and sixty-five cents. Make a motion to approve the bills. Payment of the bills?
Second.
A motion by Gorman and second by Perkins to approve payment of the bills in the amount of eight hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred three dollars and sixty-five cents. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. I am number nine is the vending license applications, seeking a motion to approve annual twenty-twenty-five vending licenses. Somewhere Jay just left a room.
I'll make a motion to approve the vending licenses.
I'll second.
A motion by Lancaster, second by Carncross. Any comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna? All eyes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. I am number ten is the Class A liquor license application. Magdalena Rios with Barra Haas, Mexican Bar and Grill, has submitted an application for a Class A liquor license. Your action is requested to approve or deny the application pending submission of fees and insurance. And Matty is here tonight if you would like to speak. If you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I really didn't really prepare anything, but my name is Magdalena and everybody calls me Maggie. I'm the owner of, my husband, I'm kind of short. But I have Mexican Bar and Grill and yeah, I mean, I'm really looking forward to getting this started and just introducing a little bit of our culture into the community. And aside from that, my background is I went to the University of Illinois and I got a bachelor's degree in accounting. That's my background.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Carncross, second by Perkins to approve the application for liquor license subject to fees and insurance. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna? Carncross?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Matty. The clerk will have that paperwork available for you in next couple of days or so. They'll contact you, so, okay? Thank you so much. And good luck in your restaurant. All right, I am number eleven is the infrastructure committee recommendation for grease trap ordinance, seeking a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance amending section thirteen A point zero six regarding grease, oil, and sand interceptors. I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the infrastructure committee to, for the grease trap ordinance addition.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Gorman, second by Carncross to approve the proposed ordinance amending section thirteen A point zero six regarding grease, oil, and sand interceptors. Any other comments or questions here?
Just note that I appreciate the city staffs getting that information diligently to us and as quickly as it was. And it was nice to have as much detailed information on that to review, so appreciate that.
And just for listeners' comments or edification, the council did request that staff query the county health department concerning what their involvement is with this particular issue. And we provided that by memo to update city council that the health department does not really regulate this, so really seeking to have this amended ordinance in our books. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Gorman?
Yeah, excuse me, yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna? Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one-three-five.
All right, thank you. I am number twelve is the infrastructure committee recommendation concerning wastewater penalties, seeking a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance amending section thirteen A point one-five regarding wastewater penalties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Carncross, second by Lancaster. Any other comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one-three-six.
Thank you, clerk. Item number thirteen is strategic vision review. The items in the strategic vision, city council wishes to review.
Twenty-one minutes in.
What's your pleasure?
Anyone?
I'm just curious on how the fiber is going for Wi-Fi in downtown, but I know that they're working on it, so.
Well, we have a representative here that can answer that question for you if you'd like, Alderman.
Sure, I guess just, I guess what's the status of it?
Could you please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please?
To the progress with surf internet. Sterling Illinois.
I guess just, I'm checking on a progress report as far as like how far along it is, just so that we kind of know.
We are getting ready to light up the first phase.
Okay.
It was in January first, in January, we were expecting to go live.
Is the fiber lighted yet?
No, that should be, that should be next on our, well, we should have, I believe we do have an area going live. It should be in January, I believe, is our first live day. I'm going to have them confirm that.
Okay. I just can't wait till you get to my neighborhood.
And I started right here outside of City Hall. I know there, I believe they said January, they were supposed to have Tony here as well, but I don't have the live construction update, sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just curious, I know you guys wanted to break ground as fast as possible and you've been working on it diligently to get it. It's just, it's kind of exciting for a small town like ours to be getting that level of service.
It takes about six weeks to go live initially.
Okay.
And they checked that, a lot of that last remaining thing is remaining steps are checking to make sure every line is live. They do check every light, every light at each residence before they go live.
Very excited.
All right, any other questions for our guest? No? Okay, thank you very much. Any other items on strategic vision council wishes to discuss? Hearing none, we move on to item fourteen, which is staff reports. We have very limited staff tonight because obviously we have some people out of office for vacation and such, so we will start with Stacy, our Parks and Rec superintendent.
All right, I don't have anything new as of the last report, except for a couple holiday events that we had this past weekend with Christmas in Harvard. So we had the Ag-Nog-Jog, so thank you to our sponsors. We had Mercy Health, Brown Bear Day Care, and Harvard State Bank, and also thanks to volunteers. Scott Logan and Ann Nutley were there to help set up and run it and all of that, so also we had the gingerbread showdown, and this year we had two submissions in the kids' category and six in the adult category, so that is growing, so hopefully next year we'll have even more. But we did have, I think it was a hundred and ninety-two people vote, so I got to count all of those and the winners have been notified, and I will post all of that on social media tomorrow. We have the Holiday House Decorating Contest. We have four homes registered right now, which is pretty exciting, so we have room for lots more. And then we have a holiday glass etching class next Monday, and we have six registered for that, so it's really exciting to see new programs growing and also things that have been done before, so existing programs are growing too, which is awesome. That's all I have.
Stacy, how many participants did you have last year for the gingerbread house?
I believe it was two. I've been told it was two.
Yeah, it was two.
Okay, it was two.
So they were already, you guys already picked somebody or you guys, it was just one-day event?
For the gingerbread?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was on Saturday during the Christmas in Harvard event. They were in the same room as Santa, so there were a lot of people in and out of there, so, yeah, but it was just for, I think it was twelve to five was the voting, so.
Sorry, one other thing to get a little extra advertising going. You have a five K coming up in the spring?
Yes, in March.
And what's it called?
It is the Spring Chicken Five K to celebrate and commemorate the passing of the backyard chicken ordinance. So we're expecting everyone to dress up like chickens, wear a chicken hat, wear a chicken costume, whatever silly thing you got.
Cluck, cluck.
Exactly.
And where is the activity guide? Has that been mailed yet?
It is scheduled to be at the post office on Thursday.
On Thursday, so residents should expect to get it sometime next week.
Correct.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Day?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Congratulations to TJ on growing out his hair, looks good. TJ's going to kill me. Dunkin' Donuts is now open, and I heard from their operations manager today, of the ninety-five Dunkin' Donut stores that this group operates in Illinois and the region, they, Harvard has outperformed all of them each of the four days they've been open, so not just that grand opening day, but so far all four days, which is exciting for Harvard and our new Dunkin' owners. Today, on behalf of the greatest city in McHenry County, I attended the twenty-twenty-four McHenry County Economic Development Corporation Investor Forum, where they had their full board meeting and then stakeholders like us, got to hear things that M C E D C is up to, what their plans are for twenty-twenty-five, and then just to network with their various board members and have dinner. I also attended a tour of MCC's Foglia Center for Advanced Technology and Innovation this week. That was a bunch of stakeholders from McHenry County that got to, got introduced to what they're doing there. It's, part of it is a incubator space for manufacturers where anyone from the public, any of us can go in there with an idea of a product that we want to make, and they will help you through the whole manufacturing process and R and D of that product. So it's pretty exciting to have that in the county. McHenry County Economic Development Corporation has partnered with MCC to have their office next to the Small Business Development Association for the county, so this is exciting for us when we are trying to bring in a manufacturer, a major employer to the county. It'd be helpful to meet at their site at MCC where they can see their future workforce attending college and get a tour of this center that I toured this week, so it's kind of a nice synergy between each municipality, the county, M C E D C and MCC, so we're looking forward to exploring that opportunity there. As you all approved tonight, the inducement resolution for Elite Health Partners, who are expanding here into Harvard from Colorado, they're a contract manufacturer who are looking to employ about fifty people in Harvard. They manufacture cosmetics, health and beauty products, dietary supplements for many, many businesses. Their products are in Costco, Walgreens, and various other retailers, and they also do product development too, as well as modified formulas, so you can take one of the formulas that they already have, change it, change up to two ingredients and put your own label on it, so if you have an idea for a cosmetic or dietary supplement, you can do that right here in Harvard now. And then we also started working on departmental brochures for fences and decks and swimming pools, so when people have questions, if we're not in the department, they can go to the front counter and grab a brochure, which will be able to answer all their questions. We are calling our brochures Build It Like No Other to go off of our challenge coin, and the first one will be done next week, that'll be the fence brochure, and then it'll be smooth rolling after that for the rest of them, so I think by next council meeting, we'll be able to present all those to you. That's all I have. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you.
Donovan?
Yes, sir.
Quick question. Um, that one on industrials, is that the one you talked about last month about?
It is.
And then, um, do you know the, like, the names of the products? So people might be familiar when I see them in the stores. Cause I was trying to look up the website and it didn't give too much information.
They only show where their product, the products that they're making for other people are sold, but they don't have a list of the products for those people. I think because when you do contract manufacturing, you don't want people to think that someone else is making your product, you want to think that it's...
So it's kind of like the, might be like the generic brand names like that, you like for the stores or no?
Not so much that, it could be a name, brand, of one type of brand, that, not necessarily a generic form, but like in the case of breweries, you might have a brewery like the one in Monroe, Wisconsin, that brews for several different types of well-known brands. So this is the same type of setup.
And I guess one other quick question, and it's also so the public knows, is I know, I don't know if this building will be the same, but I looked at the website, they also like, how is it kind of like a distribution kind of a little bit? Will that be going on in that place too?
Well, the exciting piece of this business is the other businesses that they'll utilize, so when we met with them, they already started talking with Badger Fulfillment Center to help them with the fulfillment of these products. They're looking at some local dye shops to help them with some of the parts that they need, and then as an eco-friendly business, they're exploring ways from some other manufacturers in McHenry County, I don't want to say who, that can get them away from the plastic packaging and move into other eco-friendly type of packaging like glass bottles or jars and things like that, so.
I guess, sorry, and I have one other question, I've been busy the last couple of weeks, but I saw an article a couple of weeks ago, is it true that the true value is they actually gave laid-off notices for the distribution center here in Harvard? Cause I heard, I saw an article they did, like in October was actually, they said it happened. Do you know if that's actually being shut down?
It might be the same article that we saw, there was a notice saying that it is a possibility. I don't think we've gotten an update on that yet.
So just to help out with that, that is a possibility, but what they're trying to do...
Still not finalized yet?
So what they're trying to do is through the bankruptcy process, they're trying to, that's something they had to start, but they have a potential buyer, and so they're trying to work something through the bankruptcy court and to be sold off. The idea that we've been told is that this facility should be okay. In the, if not, I know Donovan and I have been talking about having like a job fair with some of the manufacturers here in Harvard for anybody who might be affected to try to get them employed right away.
We'll know December seventeenth, I think, is the date that we will find out, and we're fingers crossed that people aren't getting laid off right before Christmas, but that's the date that we should know something.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Okay, the only thing other than the report that I submitted for this month, Carmen Sacco qualified and successfully did, or completed the Yellow Brick Road Run, which is seven miles of an obstacle course on Quantico that was developed by the Marines there. He graduates on Thursday, and he will be back to work on Monday. The last thing is the Citizen Police Academy has concluded with the graduation on Thursday night. We only had one washout that missed two classes, so we will be graduating...
Not the same one from last year?
Nope. He made it. He made it, so we will have seven, I believe, seven graduates this year, which is up from the three or four, three last year.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I won't be able to make that, I'll be out telling how that stayed.
So everything's all ready, the cake's been ordered, all the plaques and the shirts and certificates are ready to go, so congratulations to Lou for successfully doing it this year.
Second attempt, but I've made it. And this is only the second year we've had this, so...
Correct, yeah.
Going from three graduates to...
Seven.
Seven, I mean, that's still an increase.
Yep, and you know, the feedback I've gotten from not only yourself, but you know, everybody else, you know, Officer Cohen is the one that's kind of spearheaded and taught a majority of the stuff with some assistance from a few other officers and myself, but his, his, his knowledge and ability is just outstanding, and it makes the program so successful, so kudos to him.
And I can confirm that. Having done a Denver Citizens Police Academy, Wichita Citizens Academy, Wichita Fire Citizens Academy, and the FBI Citizens Academy, I can tell you, Ed did a phenomenal job.
Yeah, and you know, he's partnering not only with our dispatch center, NERCOM, for that, that day of that, that class, you know, but also, you know, with the State's Turnings Office, Turning Point, the CAC, and as well as Taylor, our police social worker, I mean, it, you know, he's, he's developed a phenomenal program for, for success, you know, even in the future, so.
Thank you very much to Ed for doing that. It's been a desire to have that for a few years, and it's good to see that it's going well.
How many years did it take you to get through those other programs, Lou?
Only, only one. The problem is ours is ten weeks.
There's proof that this one's tougher.
Ten weeks and you can only miss one.
All right, thank you, Chief. Move to committee reports. We'll start with you, Dan, anything tonight?
I just want to say that I, I really appreciate all the work that is in the time that I've been on city council, a lot of these programs and a lot of these activities. The city staff has really done a lot of work to bring it from literally nothing to where it is, and seeing that there's so much activity and growth and interest from the public and that it's only getting better. I'm really excited to see that grow, and now with the new heads of the departments that we've developed, it, I can only see it getting bigger and bigger, so especially with the parks, that's fantastic, because a small town, I come from a little bit bigger town in the suburbs, and there, it's really, we take that for granted, but when you're building it up from nothing, it takes a lot of work and a lot of dedication, a lot of time to build a program that people want to use, so that's fantastic. And I do appreciate the effort from the city staff in the situation with true value. This, I just want to make sure that it's on the record that the city has experienced an abnormal amount of job loss over the last twenty to twenty-five years, it's something that cities experienced before, and it's very sad when we start seeing businesses that have to lay people off, especially in large numbers, so the effort from the city staff to reach out to existing businesses and try to help those people at least get job fairs or some activity going so that it's not just, hey, here's Christmas, here's your, your last check, you know, have a good life. It says a lot about how much our city staff and the people care about the town and being available for those people, for those resources, so I very much appreciate that, that this town does that, so. Other than that, I wish everybody happy holidays and peace and New Year and all that.
All right, thank you. Rosen?
I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and Saturday was awesome, there, there was a lot of involvement with the community, and I was happy to see the people out there in the cold still, in the parade, and just getting involved and engaged, so I think that, yes, we are doing a lot of different things in Harvard, and people are just, it's crazy how they're coming this way, and I don't know, but it's scary sometimes because Woodstock, I think we're going to be Woodstock, because we're just, I think we're booming in, and I'm happy to see what's going on, and also the, when I see the reports, yeah, the chief sends us, it's like, this is a great place to live, there's not a lot of things, a lot of crime or anything, so I'm happy to be a Harvard resident. Have a great Christmas again, thank you.
All right, thank you. Matt?
Lou, you going to touch on the surf thing you mentioned? Okay, so ask those then. Just one other thing before I say Merry Christmas and all that. I know Lisa last city council meeting brought up the... Um, I know Lisa last, uh, city council meeting brought up the, the police report things. Um, any more discussion about that or is that gonna be more of an admin thing again for our committee? Is that, is that how we left it at? I couldn't remember.
So, um, so what was explained is that, uh, and again, this is for people that are just listening, um, uh, today. So what's been in the past is we've been, um, providing every last scrap of information on the police blotter, including stuff like, you know, stolen bicycle or, uh, damaged, uh, you know, fence and so on. And so looking at it, it's, it's, uh, we kind of made an internal decision, keep it to the stuff that's a bit more, um, important, more, uh, that so people are aware of their surroundings. And so that, that's been an internal decision and we've kind of kept it that way. It's not uncommon, um, for cities to do that as well. I mean, do you want to read or, or use up a lot of space to, to type in five damaged fences? Or do you want to, uh, have a little bit more detail on say a DUI or, um, you know, a, a fight that broke out? So we'd rather focus more on, on those, that kind of information than all the more or less lower level tedious issues.
But those bigger ones will be start pushing out again, cause I haven't seen-
No, we've been doing that whenever there's been a, no?
Just-
I stand corrected.
Just major incidences.
Just major, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. So besides that, I wish and staff, thank you for this year. You guys are doing a pretty good job, Merry Christmas and Happy New Years.
All right, thank you. Charles?
And I, I don't have anything to, uh, report. Everything's kind of slowed down with the cold and from a, from a, um, infrastructure standpoint. So I think we'll just chill until, uh, January and start thinking about spring and all the things that have to be done. But I have nothing further to report. Merry Christmas to everybody as well.
All right, thank you. Lori?
Um, just wanted to say happy holidays and Merry Christmas and also thank you for, um, keeping an eye out over there at the Park Point subdivision with the, um, you know, the dry racing kind of stuff. So, um, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Treasurer's report is spit it, she's not present, uh, cause she is sunning it up in Mexico. Attorney's report, you have anything for us tonight? Matt?
Well, thank you, and I am not TJ, obviously. Matt Walters, for those who I haven't met, but the only thing I would report is that the wholesome tolling agreement's been signed, it's been executed, um, working on the final version of some sort of development agreement with them, but we have about 90 days to get that done.
All right, thank you. Administrators report?
So, um, I didn't submit a report because it's only been two weeks and there's been a, half of that I was on vacation. So, uh, my report should be a bit thicker in January. Besides that, uh, something, uh, that I wanted to bring up is the, um, we had, oh, sorry, Surf Internet, um, I, I passed out some information, um, to the, the, uh, council. There was another, um, gas strike earlier today, but when they dug it up, they found that what happened was the, the boring machine, it actually struck a rock and pushed the rock into the line. So that, I mean, when you're digging underground, you never know what you end up hitting. But, uh, we are, we've started beginning with this week, I've had a sit-down meeting with everybody last week. They're going to be providing more information on Monday mornings. I've also passed out and Charlie has it right now, a map, um, or sorry, the, the plans that they, uh, plan on doing. And, um, Jennifer, do you have anything else?
They were also doing some training as well.
Yeah, thank you. So I, and then that was something I included in that email to everybody is that, uh, they're doing some internal, uh, training, they, they've asked Nikor to do an onsite training and one of the individuals that was kind of tied to, uh, the crew has been moved to a different crew in a different position. What's that?
The shop.
Oh, that's right. Uh, instead of hand digging, they're going to start using the shop vac.
Are they using ours or?
Theirs. Yeah, not ours.
Okay. Um, and after seeing the email later this afternoon, I guess when I looked it up, I didn't know it was last year, the one, cause this year when I looked at for Woodstock and asked people that, there, it wasn't that many this year. So I didn't, but I didn't know, cause it sounded like theirs was going on about the same time.
Yeah.
The initial thing until you said it was 2023.
So, so everyone's aware of what, uh, Alderman Perkins was just talking about. There was a bit of a comparison of what, um, uh, RLM for Surf Internet, uh, having uh, four, well now five, uh, uh, gas line strikes. Over in Woodstock, they had a very similar, uh, situation go on with I-3. What was passed on to me was that they had, um, essentially the unofficial record for line strikes. I was able to dig in a little bit more today and find out that it was, that they were indiscriminate with the lines that they were hitting. They were hitting comed, buried line, stormwater lines, uh, sewer lines, wa, um, water lines, gas lines. I mean, if it was underground, they hit it at least once. And, uh, so we don't, unfortunately, these kind of, the emphasis wasn't to, to just pass off what, what's, uh, happening right now. It's, these kind of things do happen because once you bury something, it, it does have a tendency with the ground shift a little bit. So it may be marked in one spot and it could have slid over time, uh, just because of, of the way that the ground freezes and thaws and so on. So, um, that's, so that I just wanted to make sure everyone understood what, what you're referring to.
I'm sorry to stay on that. Lou, I, I'm assuming I-3, cause I didn't ask, is that similar to fiber optic of Surf? Like another company that does it? I didn't know who I-3 was.
It, well, I, yeah, uh, so it's similar, any kind of, uh, I know in, in a previous community, uh, we actually had, uh, several sewer lines that, that were gone through. Um, it, it's, it's just something that does happen. It's not an excuse, it's, it's always a, a, an opportunity to do better, which we've talked to Surf and they've been very, um, uh, progressive in trying to, uh, stay on top of this. Uh, I mean, there was a, a strike today and I got a call within minutes after it happened and then as soon as it was resolved, uh, I got another call today about it. So they're trying to be proactive and be, uh, good stewards in the community.
And then that, uh, two, uh, managers, supervisors onsite, is that two from the subcontracted? Because-
No, it's two from Surf.
Two from, okay, so instead of, uh, what was his name? Is it Tony that's, was being onsite? Is that the gentleman?
Tony's onsite.
Yeah, so there's gonna be additional one now? Okay.
We have Justin, well, Justin from RLM's onsite.
Okay, cause I know last week him, Tony was onsite and Justin both were onsite already for that one. So I didn't know if there was gonna be a third person, like, or a second one from you guys, from the way you mentioned it.
So, yeah, no, it's just one additional one.
Okay, so they already kind of implemented that before the meeting? Okay.
So, um, but again, and this is also for everyone out there, um, Surf wants to be a, uh, good, um, member of the community. And so realizing that this has become a problem with who they hire, they are trying to do everything to minimize that and, um, and we'll see how it goes, uh, moving forward.
Yeah, they were, they were present also, RLM's here to help resolve the issue as well.
Yeah, and, and nothing against Surf itself with that, I, cause I know it's a subcontract. I just, then my, just cause my concern of what I do for a living is then if this, I don't, I doubt I do as part of that, cause I know it's a different circumstance. Unfortunately, I wasted utilities, tenant's not here today. Um, and I don't know if he's, is he, is he technically now here, like hired?
Uh, well-
Is it the 16th?
It's the 16th that he's onsite.
Okay, but I, I don't, but what happened last year as well was that house thing in Woodstock too. That's the biggest concern. And luckily no one was invol, inside, but the people outside didn't get injured.
Well, uh, obviously Surf and the city does not want that to happen. So that's why we're being proactive about it. So other than that, I was just gonna say, um, wish everyone Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and, uh, be safe come, uh, uh, New Year's Eve. Chief would like to have a small, uh, report for New Year's Eve? Thank you.
All right, uh, I'm, number 19 is clerk's report.
Um, I have some upcoming meetings. Um, the Community and Economic Development Committee that was scheduled on December 16th has been canceled. Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, um, the next one is January 7th at 7:00 PM. Infrastructure Committee meeting will be held on January 13th at 6:30. The Community and Economic Development meeting will be held on January 14th at 6:30. Uh, it is a Tuesday. Okay. Um, the Administration Committee meeting will be held on January 15th at 6:30. Parks and Recreation Board meeting will be held on January 20th at 6:00 PM. And the next city council meeting will be held on January 28th at 7:00.
Jeanette, what was the infra, what date was that?
January 13th.
Uh, January 13th at 6:30.
Is there a tree board meeting in January?
No, the next one will be February 5th. It's, uh, 6:30.
When are you gonna post these?
I will be posting them tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, for mayor's report, really only one thing to mention that is, uh, alderwoman, uh, Caroline came, it became ill yesterday and she did want to try and attend electronically, but the, uh, current ordinance does not permit that to happen if the clerk is notified within, um, outside, basically within 48 hours. So you, you have to notify the clerk greater than 48 hours. I make a recommendation that the Administration Committee take a look at that because, um, it is possible, obviously you can get sick within that period and maybe still could attend electronically, but the way the ordinance is written, we don't have any flexibility on that. So, uh, really what we need in, to accommodate it is simply enough time to be in a phone number to call you, to allow you to attend electronically. So, you know, I'm recommending to that committee that you take that under consideration and consider revising that ordinance and sending to city council.
Didn't we use that though, because we, it came from some state recommendation or something?
Yeah, so it did happen during COVID and it was state recommendation to be, uh, 48 hours or greater. Uh, and I think the logic behind that, I think, is because, um, trying to prevent someone just from calling in instead of, uh, actually attending the meeting and abusing that privilege. I think, um, but in it, in the issue of illness or, or maybe some of the other things that are listed there, there's only four reasons that you're permitted to do this anyways. To be within that, you know, uh, 48 hours, i- if the ordinance was written differently and give us some flexibility, then we wouldn't be able to allow that, cause Lisa would have liked to have attended electronically.
Now, council, because I have no, you know, I think it should, but it, no one would like say the public won't like try and, you know, say, hey, this is not what the state, you know, recommends or anything. Would be perfectly legal if we did that.
Well, I, I have a council here, could, I don't know if you know that particular law or not.
So under the Open Meetings Act, I, and I don't have all the details right in front of me, but you can, um, how it's been described, you could amend your ordinance to allow someone that took ill within 48 hours to be able to attend through some remote means. Again, still there are limited number of reasons that you can attend remotely, but illness is one of them. And, um, you could, you could amend your ordinance to fit within the Open Meetings Act and still give that flexibility.
I would say, yeah, let's get this added to the agenda for the next meeting. And I would ask that, um, whatever the, the, the legal boundaries are, like basically how far, you know, what's our limits here? Like how short can we make it? How, you know, like just, not that we need to make it that short, but just so we understand the legal, the very fine legal limits, so what we can improve.
And my understanding is when the, um, recommendation on how to, uh, word, that ordinance came down from the state was to ensure that the clerk and city staffing would have enough time to be able to accommodate the request-
Yes.
-in terms of being able to allow them to attend electronically, whether that's by video or whatever means, um, that's chosen. Considering that we utilize, uh, you know, a live phone line, really all we need is a phone number to call, so.
I think, I think too though, that there was probably a reason that, um, to give someone a chance to object and have enough time to object to that, if there was some, you know, not, not that it would happen here, but it could happen, say, in Thornton.
Or Dalton. Well, what I could say is, yeah, Dalton. So you would still have the opportunity to make a motion to prevent someone from attending electronically as the ordinance, uh, you know, the way it's written. But, you know, i- if it's revised to allow us that more flexibility, then, then we could still allow them to attend, subject to someone making a motion-
Yeah.
-and passing that motion, uh, to prevent them from, so. Can't think of any reason why council would decide to do that, but who knows?
Like I say, I don't think it would ever happen here, at least not now, but I think that, uh, who knows, you know? I mean, what people were thinking when they wrote it.
Indeed. Um, just a recommendation from, you know, mayor's office that in order, does it be nice if she could have attended electronically if we were permitted to allow?
Well, somebody's gonna have to tell Lisa to put that on the agenda.
I guess some, some, one question I would have is, is that if we don't have a quorum at the start of the meeting, but the person coming in electronically would make it a quorum, we wouldn't be able to approve them into the meeting because we wouldn't be able to vote on the quorum.
The way the ordinance is written, they're approved unless you make a motion to deny-
Ah, okay, so if we have a meeting where let's say only three, you know, four of us show up, but we need the, you know, we need the additional person for a quorum, then that would be a good idea if we have that just on those off chances that we're a little short.
Well, we can discuss that in the admin committee meeting.
Yeah, I just, something I wanted, I just thought about, okay, well, let's make sure we have all those details when we talk about it.
All right, very good. Uh, I don't have any other thing to report this evening, cause it was, again, just two weeks ago we were meeting. Uh, I do wish, um, staff, city council, constituents and businesses a very safe and happy holidays. I hope our, our retail, um, market makes as much money as they can and everybody gets what they hope under the tree, uh, come Christmas morning. So thank you very much. That's all I have. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in the second, uh, to adjourn. Clerk, call the rule.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you and good night.